We'll call the meeting back to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This time change and so dark is really making it dark today. The Board Member Baker is out of town and not able to attend. Board Member Parker is participating via Zoom. I will do just voice vote unless it's not unanimous, and then I'll call out for roll call. And except in addition on the two approval claims and the consent, A and B, I'll do those by voice since we have conflicts of interest on those two. So moving on to approval, the minutes of the meeting held October 25th and November 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those minutes are approved. Persons wishing to address the board, I'm just going to read something quick. We drafted just as state before every meeting. "The Board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda here from the community members on items of general interest or concern as well as regular agenda items. Comments are limited to five minutes unless more than three people have signed up. Then the group is limited to 15 minutes total. And we'll let you know when you have one minute remaining so you can wrap up your comments. If there are multiple people attending to speak on one topic, we would encourage you to coordinate your comments. When you are called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and the organization you represent for the record of the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see a member of our communications team prior to the meeting. They will help you distribute the information and prove any items to be shown to the public for viewing. The Board does not take comments during this time on any personnel matters, and all meeting attendees are expected to treat others with respect and civility. The Board will not respond to individual comments, and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting." Thank you for tonight, and we will continue. We have one person who is on a non-agenda topic, Chad. And you'll have five minutes.
I, a small apology in advance. I write these things down so I don't screw them up, but then I just realized I screwed something up. So if it's a little discombobulated, I apologize. Try to clarify it later. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. I'm representing myself. Please understand my intention here is to ask intelligent questions and not to question your intelligence. Any sense of frustration on my part is not directed at yourselves, but the situation we find ourselves in. First, I want to commend you on this public statement made by the district via Twitter on November 3rd. "The Sioux Falls School District does not require COVID-19 vaccination for children. Students will not be asked to show proof of their COVID-19 vaccination status. Please discuss the opportunity with your child's healthcare provider and make the best decision for you and your family. You have my strongest support for continuing this policy in the face of ever-increasing federal overreach, not just for your students, but for your staff. On August 23rd, I addressed this body asking you to update your continue-to-learn plan by acknowledging the status of COVID-19 recovered students as equivalent to that of the voluntarily vaccinated." This is prior to August 25th release of the large Israeli study showing that. To summarize, people given both doses of the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine were almost sixfold more likely to contract Delta infection and sevenfold more likely to have symptomatic disease than those who recovered. What does this mean in terms of absolute risk reduction for the COVID-19 recovered? This is of particular interest because the government of Israel has mandated vaccination of the entire population except children. Therefore, they have had little motivation to call into question the efficacy of their own policy. Instead, for children, Israel kicked off COVID-19 antibody testing for 1.4 million, where a positive result would serve as the equivalent to that of vaccination. Given this, I would ask that you consider classifying all COVID-19 recovered district employees and students as having equivalent immunity to or better than the voluntarily vaccinated, as well as reimbursing all district employees for SARS-CoV-2 antibody or adaptive T-cell response assays. Are you aware that antibody assays exist that allow you to discern between the S-type IgG antibodies conferred by the existing vaccines under EUA and the N-type IgG antibodies conferred only upon the recovery from infection? The implication being that it is possible to discern COVID-19 recovered status even in a voluntarily vaccinated person, which would potentially obviate the need for continuous booster shots. As the largest school district in the state with over 1,800 teachers and 24,000 students, what you do here matters. On October 17th, the Argus Leader reported, "What that means is better than 99% of all South Dakotans who have either been vaccinated or recovered from COVID-19 have not tested positive or tested positive a second time." On October 22nd, the Argus Leader reported, "On the dropping number of cases in our public schools, by now it's obvious that infection among the school-age population is dependent on what is happening in the wider community and not on masks." The implication being that this population has probably had the highest rate of prior immunity. But again, why don't we know? Why was the serology not done in South Dakota? Given this and the public data visible below, I encourage you to follow along. Is this still an emergency in South Dakota warranting the vaccination of children? The E in EUA is for emergency. Is there an emergency among children warranting the authorization of the vaccine for the administration to children? In the context of masking, this has been a topic of contention in this chamber. I have heard some members wonder aloud if it isn't because they have all already had it. If that is a possibility, please consider the following. December 4th, 2020, President-elect Biden, when asked, "No, I don't think vaccines should be mandatory. I wouldn't demand it be mandatory," when asked about vaccine mandates. White House Press Secretary Jen Psaki on July 25th of this year, "That's not the role of the federal government when asked about vaccine mandates." Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi on April 29th of this year. So, so here's the thing. We are, we cannot require someone to be vaccinated. That's just not what we do. It is a matter of privacy to know who or who isn't. Now we have both public and private vaccination mandates. People's livelihoods, careers, and reputations are being destroyed. Three weeks ago, the Director of Medical Ethics at the University of California, Irvine, Dr. Aaron Carriotti asked this question on Twitter. "Someone fully vaccinated with the J&amp;J vaccine is, per the data submitted to the FDA, 67% protected against infection, whereas those with natural immunity are 99% protected against reinfection. Why is the first group included and the second group excluded from the workplace?" If the district is faced with this question through ever-expanding federal mandates, I would implore you to ask more questions of the experts available to you. While doing so, you should keep in mind a 1969 article written for the American Association of Physics Teachers titled "What is Science?", where Dr. Richard Feynman makes a peculiar statement, "Science is the belief in the ignorance of experts." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. You got that timed out, right? Okay, we'll move on. There were no, nobody signed up for agenda items. We'll move on to approval of the agenda, please. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Onto the good news report.
Good evening. We want to start the good news report tonight by acknowledging that November is Native American Heritage Month, and we encourage you to take a look at the artwork in the lobby. It is from Eugene Field A-plus Elementary, where students have been learning about ledger art. In the early 19th century, Plains Indian warriors painted their stories about their hunts and other heroics on animal hides. Then they were introduced to colored pencils and paper, but it was hard to find paper back then, and so they chose to draw on the pages of a ledger book. As a result, the generic name became a ledger drawing. So those are hanging. I know we haven't had artwork in the entry for quite a while, but I did put some up last Friday, and that's the students' artwork from Eugene Field in honor of Native American Heritage Month. And at our next meeting, we'll learn about a grant that is helping some of our Native American students learn more about their culture. So, part two. We have our monthly segment to highlight the Sioux Falls School District's 150th anniversary, and we're focusing tonight on schools that were part of our past but are no longer in service. So the list in front of you is the list of schools that have been part of our past. The first, of course, Central School was the first in the district. It was built in 1878, and seven years later was renamed Irving. It was an eight-room structure built where the Washington Pavilion currently stands today. The name Irving was actually attached to at least three school buildings over the years. The most recent was along 11th and Spring Avenue, which was rebuilt from a wood structure to a brick structure in 1935. There at Irving was the start of what is now All Cities program, where parent involvement is required in the classrooms. The building came down recently, and now you can see some nice, beautiful new apartment buildings standing in that area. Next up, McKinley High School. McKinley actually stood in the same block as Irving, so 11th and Spring. It was kind of kitty-corner from, from Irving. It was previously a Catholic boarding school, but was purchased by the school district as the population of Sioux Falls grew. That building then was razed and torn down in 1936. Then come with me to Longfellow Elementary. Originally in 1885, it was built at 14th Street and 2nd Avenue, which is near downtown Sioux Falls today. A new Longfellow then was built on 20th Street and 4th Avenue in 1914, where we currently think of it being today. It operated as a school until 2015, when it was sold to Dakota Abilities for a residential living facility. So that is a great part of our past and still a part of our future. Lincoln Elementary. That school opened in 1889 between 8th and 9th Street and Grange Avenue. The school closed in the mid-1990s when voters adopted building standards that could not be met in that old building. Many of those standards are still standards we use today. The old Lincoln Elementary was torn down, and that is a grassy area near the Axtel Park building today. Riverside Elementary. That opened in 1889 as well as a one-room schoolhouse in the northeast side of Sioux Falls. It closed intermittently between 1897 and 1907, and the wood frame structure stood actually until 1951, when it was replaced by a brick school. So Riverside was actually renamed to Laura B. Anderson in honor of a beloved principal who served at that school for 35 years. So the new brick building was built in 1951, and in 1963 is when we renamed Riverside LBA. Consequently, the wood structure that was replaced by brick was moved up the hill to Cliff Avenue to Norton Acres, and that old Riverside was then named Bryant. The Bryant School served children until 1970. Bancroft opened in 1915 on the corner of 8th and Blaveld. That's where Terry Redlin Elementary stands today. The name of the building was considered a bit of a mystery, but they believe it was to honor George Bancroft, who was an American historian. One of the most notable staff members at Bancroft was longtime principal Rachel Newkirk, who served for 34 years. Lots of longevity there between Laura B. Anderson and Rachel Newkirk. Terry Redlin opened on that site in 1998. Linwood School was located east of the city of Sioux Falls limits. The school was located near 10th and Sycamore. Linwood joined the school district in 1965, but it was eventually phased out one grade at a time until it completely closed in 1973. Then we're heading back across town to Emerson Elementary. That opened in the fall of 1923. It transitioned from a neighborhood school in 1974 to a special education center. Today, special education students are, of course, integrated into their neighborhood schools. Next, Lewis Heights came into the district in 1923 in the area of 12th Street and Cleveland Avenue. The building had been on the original Whittier site, but was moved to the location known as the highest as the highest part of the city, that being Lewis Heights. Parents were concerned about the long walk to Whittier, so they wanted that building at 12th and Cleveland to keep their students in the neighborhood. Then we're moving to South Sioux. Sioux Falls and, and South Sioux Falls were actually two communities. At one point in time, they were incorporated in 1890. The first school named South Sioux was in 1878 and was on the east side of Minnesota Avenue and 41st Street, which is now the gas station over here. A second building was then constructed at 41st and Phillips, which is residential. And finally, the third building went up on the corner of 41st Street and Norton Avenue, which is now Graham Automotive. South Sioux also provided special education services for a number of years, and really it appears that the start of what is now community campus actually started in South Sioux as students were able to learn life skills in stores, restaurants, using public transportation and such. So that program's still growing and going strong today. The early community of West Sioux then, not to be outdone by South Sioux, was also interested in keeping their kids close to home. Meredith School was opened in 1892 in West Sioux Falls. It was closed and reopened many times in its 35-year history. The building remained vacant for 13 years, and then it was sold, and then eventually Jane Adams was built on the Meredith location. Then we have Air Base School. Air Base was located in the triangle of land by Madison Street, Burnside, and West Avenues. The Air Base School came onboard in the mid-1940s as the World War II raged on. There was a radio technical training school in Sioux Falls for the Army Air Corps, and so of course, with a number of people coming here for training, classrooms were needed for students as well. When the war ended, a building that had been used as a surgical hospital, that was transitioned into classrooms, while the remaining hospital units were used as homes for those who stayed here after the war had ended. In the late 1940s, East Central Sioux Falls was growing, of course, became home to Jefferson Elementary on the site that is now Sonia Sotomayor. Jefferson Elementary closed in 2015, and as you already know, it was re-selected for the name of our newest high school. In the heart of what is now Sioux Falls was Mark Twain Elementary, which opened its doors to students in 1920. PTA was the big thing at Mark Twain. They did everything from supporting class plays to cakewalks, magic shows, mother-daughter skits. Tumbling was something the PTA took a lot of interest in as well. Mark Twain watched scores of children grow up in that neighborhood, and then those children returned to raise their children as well. So a very beloved school. The building closed in 2015 to make room for Susan B. Anthony, which joined students from Longfellow and Mark Twain under one roof. Just two more. General Beatle Elementary was constructed in the original Longfellow site at 14th and opened in 1921. The PTA voted to name the school after General Beatle to honor the Civil War leader who also served as Superintendent of Public Instruction for Dakota Territory from 1877 to 1885. Toward the end of its use, General Beatle School housed classes for Southeast Technical College. And then Franklin Elementary is solid as a rock, literally, if you've heard the stories. Franklin was built on solid granite, and blasting over the years caused a lot of cost to go into that building. There was blasting to build it, and then some blasting when they needed to put in a, a water line and do some other changes in the 80s. That building located near 3rd and Cliff Avenue was built in 1923. In the 1990s, it became the district's first alternative high school, known as Joe Foss, and that building then was sold to private interests in 2015. So that's a good look at our past and schools that no longer exist but certainly play a role in the future and the, the current existence of the Sioux Falls School District. Any questions?
Sad part is, I remember most of them.
No comment.
Great information. Mike said, "Great information, and could we, in any way with our new website rollout, like, add something like that? Because I think it'd be great for people to know what, what, why that school was named that, why, you know, those type of things. I think it's just great."
You bet. As you might recall, we have a digital time capsule also, so the items that I'm, I've prepared for the board will be positioned on the digital time capsule as well. So people who are interested in a particular building or interested in a particular decade or something of that manner will be able to find all of the information I've provided here this evening.
Thank you.
Very good. No new conflicts of interest, so I'll move on to the consent agenda. Items 12A through D. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Those carry. Onto the consent agenda supplemental, 13A, 1 through 4. I'll do roll call on this. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second? I'll second since Carly cannot. All those in favor, I'll do roll call. Board Member Muirin.
Aye.
Board Member Ryder.
Abstain.
Board Member Parker.
Aye.
Board Member Mickelson.
Aye.
That, that motion is approved with three ayes and one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Onto 13B, approval claims for Vera. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. Board Member Muirin.
Aye.
Board Member Ryder.
Aye.
Board Member Parker.
Abstain.
And Board Member Mickelson. That motion is approved with three ayes and one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto the reports of the superintendent. First, we have the Sioux Falls School District Academic Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk about our academic report from the 2021 Report Card, along with our NWA map data and our information from SAT and ACT reports. So the Sioux Falls District's Balance Assessment System monitors student learning in relation to the written district curriculum with data collected from a variety of assessments, and we're going to look at those tonight. All assessments in a balanced system arise from the understanding of the primary purpose of the school is to maximize student achievement, and assessment is the process for gathering evidence of student learning to inform education-related decisions. The Sioux Falls District's State Report Card was released on October 14th, 2021. The State Report Card provides a variety of data for school leaders, policymakers, parents, and the general public. Due to, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and unprecedented learning conditions, the state recognizes that the data in this report card isn't comparable to other years due to attendance and disrupted learning that might have happened for certain students throughout, even though we were in school the whole time. So we're going to start tonight. We're going to look at our graduation rates, and the high school graduation rate has increased for the fifth consecutive year, reaching an all-time high of 85.5% for that four-year cohort. So that's a great celebration for students in the Sioux Falls School District. We also look at the completer rate, and the completer rate takes into consideration that sometimes students take longer to reach that graduation marker. And so this is the percentage of students who persist towards a diploma or a GED past that graduation, their four-year cohort. And we have 87, 88.7% of our students that reached that completer last year, and you notice that's lower than previous years, but we had, if you go back to the 1920 school year, we had a high rate of graduation, and so then, or the completer rate, so then that pool of completers for last year would be smaller, and that makes sense. So we got more to the finish line in 1920, so then there's less to get to the finish line in 2021. ACT. The ACT is a curriculum-based test for college readiness that tests all academic achievement in the areas of English, math, and reading. It also offers a writing component. Last year, the Sioux Falls District had a number of students who took that, so we had 52.6% of our population choose to take the ACT. And again, these are students that register for this exam. They typically take it their first year in a junior, and they can take it multiple times to get the needed scores, and they're used for scholarships and college admittance. So 52% of the Sioux Falls graduating class took the ACT. The class did see a decrease in the students who voluntarily decided to participate. The national ACT participation rate decreased 22.5%. The state ACT participation rate decreased 9%, while the Sioux Falls District was 6.7%. On your screen, you can see the composite score, and Sioux Falls continues to outscore the state and the national level on the ACT composite, so at 22.7. We do have a few students who choose to take the SAT, so the Scholastic Aptitude Test, and this is in addition to the ACT. So we had 40 students who took that test. 95% of them met the benchmark for reading and writing, and 88% met the benchmark for math. Again, a voluntary test. College and career readiness. So the State Report Card reports out the college and career readiness indicators for the cohort of students that graduated in June of 2020. So this is a year behind, but we made some great gains in that college and career readiness. So it combines the coursework readiness with assessment readiness, and our coursework readiness, the Sioux Falls District increased from 58% to 75% in that area, and then the assessment readiness, we went from 59% to 62 for an overall college and career readiness at 53%. So that was a 10% increase in that total, when you wrap up the college coursework and the assessment readiness. And that's due to the number of the students taking that National Career Readiness Certificate, so the NCRC. They take that assessment, and that helped to boost those numbers up. Next year on that report card, the endorsements that the students earn on their graduation diploma, that will work into the coursework readiness score also, so we should see another increase with that, with those endorsements. South Dakota Report Card Achievement Scores. When we look at the multiple measures that we look at for the, for assessment, we use our district assessment, but then this is the State Report Card for English Language Arts and Math, and it's administered to students in grades 3 through 8 and 11 during the spring of '21. The Sioux Falls scores in reading and math lag behind the state averages at all grade levels except 11th grade, which math is above the state average by 2%. In recognizing additional supports are needed, all grade levels have implemented academic interventions throughout the school day to support student learning in the areas of reading and math. And here, this chart summarizes all the academic supports that we have put into place by level. So you can see that through recognizing the impact, you know, our scores were dipping, but then the impact that COVID had on that, the nine weeks out, and then the interrupted learning throughout last year, we realize that we have work to do, and so we've placed these academic interventions at all levels.
Can I go back one slide? All right.
And then we've included the NWA map, map data also, and we take that in grades K through 8. And this is another type of assessment nationally norm that helps us keep benchmark data on our students three times a year. So really looking at that information, and the leadership teams in the schools use this as part of their measure and watching how their students are growing. In the fall of '21, the reading data indicates that students in grades 3, 4, 5, 6 are slightly below the national norms, while grades 7 and 8 exceed those norms. However, grades 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8, fall reading data exceeded the fall 1920 scores. And so when I read this information, I really look at our 2020 norms. I look at how our students did in 1920 and where we're at in '21, '22, and we're, we're back to where we were pre-COVID in the fall. And so that, that tells us that we caught up, and now we just need to accelerate that learning. And so this helps give us hope of where we're going, but we need to keep that information along with that state information, and we really need that urgency because the teachers have those students in front of them for one year, and how do we get them to where they need to be? And keeping that as our end game for those students. And there's the map data, and in the map data, math map data, students in grades 1, 2, 7, and 8 demonstrated growth, and on those assessments on the national norms, while grades 3, 4, 5, and 6 were slightly behind the national norms. And then we have our English Language Acquisition, and so those are students working towards second language acquisition. They take that access assessment, which measures ELA proficiency. Students, upon the initial score, students are placed on that curve and expected to achieve proficiency within five years. During the 2021 year, 38% of the students who took the access assessment either exited or were determined to be on track. This is slightly down versus last year, but still within the baseline year of 17 and 18. And again, last year, just all the masking, I mean, it, that they don't get to see and hear as much behind a mask. So again, looking at where are we at now and moving forward. And the last area is school environment, which is our attendance. Nearly 90% of our K through 8 students attended school more than 90 of the enrolled days. There's a slight decrease in the percentage, the percent achieving the 90% threshold, which can be traced back to the pandemic environment, and these same decreases were seen on the statewide and the national level. And again, the information from the state is we can't use this data to compare to previous. We have to look at it for actual, but we can't disregard it either, and we know we have work to do, and that's the goal of the Sioux Falls District. We continue to graduate the students that are college and career ready, but we recognize a current academic achievement in all areas of reading and math lag behind the state and national averages, and the leadership teams in the school use multiple assessments to monitor that achievement and the growth to support each student towards graduation. I'll stand by for any questions.
Well, the good news is, looking at our ACT scores, so obviously when we get them to that high school age, and the 11th grade testing scores, we're, we're at that. So it's, we're, we're getting kids that might need more help than we have had in the past, and we just need more time to get them. So I appreciate, you know, we've been pushing hard on these interventions in the elementary, middle, and high school, and it will be exciting to see if those do come to fruition and help with the funding that we've had, and we can see what the testing is next year. I do, I know we make teachers test and the students a lot, but I do believe that map testing is a better indicator of how our students are actually today, especially when we could see if there was a slip from the spring of last year to the fall of this year, and not seeing that slip. So obviously, what we're teaching is now sticking with them longer, so that's, that's a good sign as well for our district, so.
It's encouraging. Yeah, and we, we had a noticeable difference between our students who did summer reading programs in that retention and where they started. You know, when we think back to last year, I shudder to think where we would be had we gone remote all year and had another round of that, and we, we continue to see the impact, but at the same time, there were some needs that we knew were apparent before COVID. I think a lot of things have been magnified and accelerated with the pandemic conditions. You know, Teresa mentioned the, just the effect of a mask, and if you think about a kindergarten or a first grader learning phonemic principles and trying to look at letter sound recognition and just the clunkiness that I think our staff felt last year, that's really hard work. So now we've got ground to make up, and the good news is, you know, a lot of the supports that districts had were designed to put in place to remediate that, you know, what's termed COVID slide or however you want to term it. So we have a
So, we have a good chance with some of the infusion of resources and really digging into those instructional strategies, scientifically-backed reading instruction and math. And so, that's why we have to really feel that sense of urgency as well. But we feel like we have some really good things in place as we go out and observe classrooms. I can even tell some of the trainings that we did this summer have really impacted instruction. So, we're excited to see kind of what that looks like over the next few years. I think what we don't know is what is that going to look like for a struggling reader that was struggling last year? How long will that effect last, and can we bring them up to speed? That's our goal, is that we make up that ground quickly so that kids can be on target.
Definitely. And I also shudder to think, to use your term, if we hadn't amended the quarantine protocol last year as well, because you look at that attendance, and that would have just, you know, we changed that in October. If we had had been that way throughout the school year, that would have just been plummeted, those numbers as well. So, I commend our board for making that move to change that, because I do think that made a difference on those attendance numbers for our students as well, so.
Yeah. I would just like to add, I think it is encouraging to see that we didn't slide as much as maybe we had anticipated, and I think a huge kudos goes out to our teaching staff for the time and energy and just the level of engagement that they had with students and parents and trying to do their best every single day with the challenges that they had. And you can tell that their efforts paid off in these numbers, but I think if you asked parents and you asked teachers who work with each other, they would say that they were there for each other, too. And I think you can't really put a number on that. You can't put a score to that, but I think that teachers felt that they had some community together, and hopefully, they felt supported by parents and the students in their class, too. But a huge thank you to them for the work that they did, because it was not easy. There was no easy day in a school last year, and some would argue this year even, too, but they did a great job and really made an impact in a big way to a lot of people.
Totally. Thank you, Carly. That's so important, and big thank you to everyone in the whole district who really showed up and showed up for work, showed up to do what they had to do through some interesting times, because they did great work for our district. So, thank you.
Let me in.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing no other further discussion or questions, do I have a motion to acknowledge the Sioux Falls School District Academic Report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That is acknowledged. Thank you, Dr. Boyson. Now, onto FY23 budget timeline and guidelines.
Thanks. Thank you. A few weeks ago, a group of Sioux Falls School District Administration and the two school board members that are on the Budget Committee met and discussed the budget guidelines and timelines, and we're going to proceed with the FY23 budget, and this kind of kicks off our FY23 budget period tonight. So, I'll just walk through, most of this is familiar to the past, there's a few new things. I'll point those out. A typical one is that we allocate district resources only to direct achievement of the district mission and the priority areas. We evaluate existing programs to determine effectiveness of mission and goals, and we strive to maintain class ratios at all levels. We've done a pretty good job of that the last 20 years. At the committee level, we're going to do our 90%, 95%, 98% reductions, our 2% reduction, 5% reduction, 10% reduction, and then we're going to ask that at least one of those just be a pure 1% reduction, because we have caps, minimums, and maximums on each of those other levels. So, we're going to continue to do that as well. And then, of course, budget at the 100% of program, which is what's it going to cost next year to do what you're doing this year if there's no change in the program? Expansion programs may be budgeted, and we're going to recommend that if you do that, you find another budget within your cluster to cut to pay for the budget. That's usually a wish that we have, that doesn't always happen. So, we say if you're not able to do that, then you got to explain why. Would be a good choice if funds are available to actually afford expansions. At the committee level, we're going to also identify items currently being funded by ESER funds that will become an ongoing expense for the district when the ESER funds go away. The central leadership team is going to try to, you know, every year, when we do our five-year plan, we always plug in efficiencies. So, we're going to ask the central leadership team to prepare some significant reductions to achieve those efficiencies in the committed fund packet, so kind of outside of the Budget Committee level. That, there's a group composed of principals from, two principals from each level, and then some central administrators that deal with overall budget issues that are going through, and it's kind of a three-year process. They're going through each budget and going, you know, into detail on it, and we're going to present that to the leadership team, and then in the areas that we've looked at so far, look at possible some reductions to possibly do, if we need to make our efficiency levels. So, that's how that's going to work. Then, of course, impact, prepare impact on program narrative that is specific and relates to the district. At the budget review level, we're going to recommend funding priorities, of course, that support the district's priorities, areas. Prioritize all levels within $500,000 of the funded range and all levels outside the funded range, so the stuff that, the items that are on the margin, we'll prioritize them and have a discussion about that. We continue to prioritize federally funded programs and ensure optimal use of those dollars, align the fund balance within the five-year budget plan, and prepare revenue deficit options to align with the five-year budget plans. And then the timeline is essentially very similar to last year's, just updated for the current year. On December 8, we'll meet with the Cost Center supervisors to distribute the budgets and discuss these guidelines. On January 7, we'll ask that you either complete your Level 4 budget, at least a draft of it is completed, or if you're only doing one level, it's a federal program, you complete that draft of it, so we can see how we align next year with where we thought we'd be without getting into any other details. So, it gives us an early look at where we stand. On January 31, we want the first draft of the completed budget due, certainly not the final one, but we can look at it, make sure people are doing things consistently, those types of deals. On March 4, all budgets are due, and then on March 17, the Budget Review Committee, which is about 22 individuals, including the two board members from the Budget Committee, will meet and go through those budgets and prepare recommendations for the full board. Then our public meetings on March 30 will be the first of two public work sessions on the FY23 budget, and they're on Wednesdays, and they're a week apart. On April 6, the second of two will happen, and then on April 11, will be the public hearing on the FY23 budget and the tentative approval by the board. Then, as always, the first regular meeting of the new year. The adopted FY23 budget will be approved, and that'll be on July 11 of 2022. The recommendation, then, is to approve the FY23 budget guidelines and timeline as presented. Standby for questions.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for stating this process, and what's important for the public to notice is, like, so December 8 is the day after the governor's giving her budget address that she'll state what her big three, what the funding will be on that, so that's why we kind of wait for that number to be announced. And then the March at the end of session, once they make that final, that's when we can go into mode and start talking with the public about what our budget is, and that's why those dates kind of coincide with that, those timeframes. And we, a couple years ago, we added that second work session. It used to be only one work session on the budget, but we added a second one to allow more time for the public to look at budget, have comments, get back to us, board members, or ask questions. So, please feel free to use that, and it's good for the board, it's good for the public to have that timeframe to be able to question and look at those things. Any other questions for Mr. Beak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the budget timeline and guidelines?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is adopted. Thank you very much, Mr. Beak. Anything else for the good of the board, public? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.